Good morning, everyone. It is about 8:32 in the morning, and this is the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Welcome all. We will start with a call to order and roll call. Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Green, Antor, Merchant, DeBoer, Hildenbrand, Ponstein, Burl, Coleman, Breevy, Teal, Sparks, McLeod, Hennessy, Oliver King, LaGrand, Baker, Woodin, Tekla, Diaz, Boujack, Chair Steck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We will now call on Commissioner Burl for the invocation. Good morning.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So today, in the daily devotional, it was gaining prudence was the heading here. And at first, it says Proverbs 8 through 8, 1 through 12, but particularly Proverbs 8 5 to open it up. “You are simple; gain prudence. You who are foolish, set your hearts on it.” The word prudence is not one we use or hear very often, but the Book of Proverbs seem to enjoy using it, so perhaps it is worth reevaluating. Prudence can be defined as the ability to discipline yourself, to manage your affairs well, and to discern and to have good judgment. We need prudence so that we can make good decisions and not act rashly or too quickly without first considering the cost or consequences. In proverbs, wisdom calls everyone to gain prudence. We should act with discernment, thinking carefully even if our intentions are good. For example, it can be good to give money for important causes, but we should first pray and discern how and where to give it so that we can be sure our gifts are distributed well. Jesus encouraged his disciples to have prudence. In Luke 14:28, for example, he says that if you want to build a tower, won’t you first sit down and estimate the cost to see if you have enough money to complete it? In a similar way, Jesus wants us to assess the cost of being his disciple. We need to consider his words and discern his ways so that we can confidently follow his example and sets our hearts on him. How might Jesus be calling you to seek prudence today? So as we pray, “Jesus, as your Spirit gives me wisdom, to know you more fully; give me prudence, to love you more deeply, and to follow you with greater intentions.” Amen.
(Inhales) I believe this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next item is the Special Order of Business, and we will have a special presentation on the Grand Rapids Whitewater. And I see Mr. Hickock here. Good morning. I believe you and Matt Chapman are going to give their presentation.
We are. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and pleased to be here. Chair Commissioners, Mr. Administrator. It’s an interesting time to give an update on Whitewater. We’re in the middle of very intense discussions with Eagle and EPA and other regulatory bodies who have oversight of this. There are seven, I might remind you, that have to approve this project. So we’re getting down to the time where, in fact, some of the funding will be challenged if we don’t get this done rather soon, so everybody’s very, very focused. So the timing, I guess, is good in that way. So we’re going to talk about a couple of things. One, I know a lot of you aren’t as acquainted with this project, at least from our perspective, as others, so we’re going to talk about sort of the basics. What are the purpose and what do we hope it’ll look like? And then we’ll get into those regulatory issues. So at that point, I’m going to turn over to Matt Chapman, our chief project officer.
Thank you, Steve, and good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having us. Just a little bit of a reminder, again, Steve and I are welcome to, or welcome any of you to reach out and provide some more details if you have any questions. But this project is really intending to try to really do a lot, a very complex project. And what you see on the screen here is our project purpose, and we very much mean so to do and meet every one of these single goals that we have outlined in the project purpose. So it’s much more than just recreation and whitewater, but we truly do want to improve the river, improve the habitat, improve fish passage, and bring back the rapids that this city is named after. And so we have been in the process for the last 15 years, as Steve will get into, a very intense process, really for the last five years, of trying to develop a design that will meet every one of these goals that is outlined in our project purpose. The permits that we have in front of the regulatory agencies right now are for what we refer to as the lower reach, and just kind of a reminder and some setting of the stage, that’s a project area from just upstream of Bridge Street, where the first dam is located in front of the post office, downstream to about Fulton Street. So the project that we’re working on right now is removal of those four low-head dams and then replacing them with some more natural rock and boulder structures like what you see on the screen here. On the east side of the channel, so in front of like the JW Marriott, the Amway, you’ll see more of kind of a casual, more relaxed whitewater, similar to what you might find in the St. Mary’s River in some of the pictures on the top of the screen there. And then on the west side of the channel, where we have better access for things like emergency, fire, rescue, and just better access in terms of getting people in and out of the river, you see some more of the whitewater recreational elements. So again, those four dams are taken out and replaced with natural rock and boulders that are designed and engineered in a way that creates safe flows that actually flush people downstream as opposed to holding them in kind of a recirculating hydraulic like what we see today, but then also provide some of those opportunities for people to play, things like Santa paddle boarding, surfing, kayaking, also improving that natural fish passage and connectivity throughout the entire reach. So all of those features that you see have been gone through very closely in this unique process with agency staff from Fish and Wildlife, from DNR, Michigan Department of Fisheries, let’s see, Eagle, and then EPA, as Steve will get into. So the design that we see here is a direct result of that agency coordination, and a lot of work and a lot of changes have been made to this design in order to try to capture all of the requirements from the state and federal agencies as well. So again, we are trying to have positive impacts on the river, on the riparian rights. We’re trying to minimize those impacts, the negative impacts of a project like this. So anytime we get into a river, there will be impacts to the river, and we’ve tried to minimize those as much as possible through construction methods, through the design process, minimizing impacts to wetlands. And then, of course, we and then the City of Grand Rapids as well, very keyed in, making sure that whatever we do out in that river does not cause a flooding issue. So our application demonstrates that the project does not cause harmful interference, which is essentially a fancy word for flooding per the regulations, and that’s part of the ongoing regulatory review process that is currently happening. So this has been, kind of as I mentioned in the beginning with our project purpose, it’s been a challenge to balance all of these different project goals. So obviously, we want to have a safer river. We don’t want to create flooding. We don’t want to do anything that allows sea lamprey to get farther upstream. So all of these goals on here are really what we have been working on, and the challenge here, of course, is that sometimes you work with a federal agency that might have oversight of one, two, or three of these goals. Sometimes you get different information from different departments within the same agency, and that’s really been kind of part of that ongoing process over the last few years, is to create a design that meets all of these goals and objectives, and that’s what we would deem to be the ultimate successful project for this river. So that, I’ll turn it back over to Steve for the regulatory update.
Thanks, ma’am. Yeah, so we’re at an interesting place, and as I mentioned, we have a number of agencies to appease. And some of that’s good news, and some of that’s not so good news at this point, but we’re still working through it. First of all, we needed an environmental assessment regarding the federal funding that was provided. Senator Stabenhouse’s office primarily, but also Senator Peters helped us secure $4.1 million for the project. That has to be committed by June 30, 2023, to a project. So our, you know, time certainly is becoming limited on our space to get this done and get the regulatory review out of the way. That assessment’s going very well, and in fact, we think that’ll be completed shortly. It analyzed all the environmental impact and potential impacts to both social and cultural resources as well. The CLOMAR is shorthand for what is a contingent letter of map revision, but it’s from FEMA. It’s regarding the flood issues, because, of course, one of the primary things we need to do is make sure we don’t cause harm to anybody that lives along the river or any of the river side, shoreline. So with FEMA, we need to get this letter from them that says, “We looked at the project. No, it does not have a negative impact on the need for flood insurance, et cetera.” We’re working on that process, feel very good about it. What our work has shown is that the project indeed has zero impact, does not raise the river at all. There were some modeling issues that raised the river a quarter of an inch in some spots, but they were unrelated to the project, and we believe we’ve mitigated for those. So we feel good about that regulatory process. The snuffbox mussels, you may remember hearing about, it is an endangered species, and a few of them reside in this stretch of the river, even though the environment’s not good. This river was stripped of rock and all kind of support on purpose back, you know, turn of the century, turn of the former century, because people were trying to make Grand Rapids a better port, so they were pulling rock out of the river. But there’s still some mussels left. Some of those are endangered. We had to deal with that. So we got a biological opinion from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, and that’s gone well. In fact, that’s been issued. So they’ve approved our plan to manage the endangered species that’s in the river. Then we get to the Eagle and EPA, and we were struggling with them, and I think the last time I reported to you, we talked about it some, in their view of the recreational part of the river, and frankly, that’s the thing the county was most interested in, because the funding you provided, the county supported us in several ways, great counsel, first of all, from staff and others, also public support, which means a great deal. But you also allocated $1.4 million from the, as I’m sure Al shared, from the hotel motel tax fund for this project, and $500,000 of that we were allowed to use for engineering and other things we needed to do to create this 3,000 pages of application we’ve made to these different agencies. The rest, you’ve held back wisely, waiting for permitting, so that it goes directly to rocks in the river and construction process. But that was based on, obviously with the hotel motel tax, that it was going to create economic development and tourism and people coming to the community, so basically refilling that pot with the work that’s being done, which I know is what you try to do with that tax fund generally. So that piece of it is, in fact, what is mostly at issue. And so what we did quite a while ago is put together all of the agencies, federal and state, and they all participated and participated well and willingly, and we said, “Okay, if we need to redesign the project, let’s do it.” And that’s when we went from 11 waves to four. That’s when we lowered the height of the waves, and yet we still believe we ended up with a project that’s interesting enough to draw tourists. That’s what we applied on. That issue has been raised again, even though that process was undertaken, and even though we entered that process and went through it in good faith. So we’re working through now, okay, let’s get into the details. What is it about this that we need to resolve to get moving forward? And again, we’re, everybody’s speaking in good faith. We’re working through this. We’re trying to get it done as quickly as we possibly can, knowing that there’s a very tight deadline coming. So we filed that application in October of 2020. It was ruled administratively complete by the department in late 2022. We had a public comment period. There were some 600 comments received, all but a dozen maybe positive, and very positive, in fact, and letters from, I know, some of you, and we greatly appreciated that. It was a very encouraging process. We have received letters from both Eagle and EPA on, “Okay, here are the remaining issues,” and it is those issues that we’re working through and attempting to resolve. So let me back up and summarize what we’re trying to do here. Really, simply put, we’re taking four perilous dams that create a churn that can trap and hurt people, kill people. In fact, they’re up to three feet high. They span the entire 470-foot, this is 450, but it’s 470 on average width of the river. They block boat passage, except when the river’s high enough to go over them. They block any non-jumping fish passage. So things like walleye and bass and sturgeon can’t get to historic spawning grounds because of those dams. They were put in, by the way, because when the river would dry up in the late summer, early fall, the edges would be dry. Well, of course, the river was used to move waste, so that wasn’t a pleasant thing when that would happen. So they put in these dams to pool the water, and they do exactly what they were designed to do. They pool the water out, so they retain that water. We believe there’s a better way to pool and retain that water, and it’s through this more natural effort. So we’re going to take out those dams. Instead of that, replace that grade control by putting in these natural rock and gravel structures. Most of it is this riffle Matt talked about, this area where it’s just, you know, like the St. Mary’s River, not huge whitewater, allows fish passage, allows boat passage. And then a small part of the river in four different spots, 30 to 170 feet of the river, will be used for these amenities that we hope will create this tourism and the whitewater opportunities for folks. They’re not huge, by the way. I mean, it’s, the crest, the drop is about 18 inches. The current drop of the dams is more than that, and of course, the dams cover the whole river. These would cover just a part. So environmentally, we’re doing a lot better than what was there, even though we’re still creating some, you know, some rise. So why do we care about the waves and having those there? Well, it really is about the family sitting in Chicago that says, you know, “We’re going to go away for a weekend. Let’s go find something to do.” If they have a predictable amenity in that river that they know they can go kayak against or with, we believe they’ll come. And you draw that four-hour circle around Grand Rapids, you’ve captured 40 million people. We think we can get half a million of them to come and either enjoy that amenity in the water or outside of it. And so we’re pretty excited about its potential, but from our mind, from the mind of Grand Rapids Whitewater, the project really is not a project without those recreational waves. Funding, I mentioned the county’s funding. We’ve had private commitments of 16.4 million, and there again, we’ve received much of that in cash, but we’ve also told people, “Please hold it back until we’re permitted,” because we don’t, you know, until we have the permission to go forward, we don’t want to, we don’t want to collect that money. We have state and local government appropriations, including yours, of 18.1 million, and federal commitment, I mentioned, the 4.1. There’s also 20 million committed for the second part of the project, that upper-reach project, that includes the alternative hydraulic structure that’ll replace the lamprey barrier, but that’s frankly for another day and another dreamer. The project, in part, has been catalytic. It has created great thought about what might happen on the river shore, and the public museum’s probably the furthest ahead on these projects. Everybody now talking about facing the river, using the river, thinking about people being in the river and having that be active space rather than dead space. And so it’s been very exciting to watch and to see, and we do, we’re very proud of that fact. So at the end of the day, and this isn’t a great drawing, but it’s something my nephew threw together for me, but, you know, we’re hoping we can bring the rapids back to Grand Rapids and move forward with the cultural, environmental, and economic benefits that it provides. Mr. Chair, we’ve finished our remarks. We’re happy to answer any questions if there are.
I suspect there will be some questions. Perhaps before we open it up, though, Administrator Vandenberg, you have a couple of other comments regarding our county involvement.
That we have brought resolutions to the board periodically to extend the deadline of the CIP due to the permitting issues, so.
Yeah, it was a number of years ago that the county made that commitment to this project. I thank you for reviewing the amount of that, so.
I think at that time, we hoped it’d be done in a year or two, so it feels like we’ve said that all along.
Hope springs eternal.
Yes, it does.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Boujack.
Good morning. Thank you for exciting presentation. You mentioned that these redesign is going to be navigable by boats. To what size of boats are you considering?
That’s an excellent question. So right now, it’s the jet boats and the fishing boats get upstream at the right time of the year to get to the Sixth Street Dam, you know, in catchment, but not many do. This will be certainly better than it is today, because those dams will be out of the way, and so the river will flow more naturally. But, you know, it’s still only going to be, you know, I’m guessing that boat path will have three feet of depth, so it could be pretty significant. It is not the vision, the dreams, you know, somebody had about bringing big boats in from Grand Haven all the way up the river. It’s certainly not that, because they’d be prevented from even getting that far.
And that was going to be my next question, is will this have a component where, at the lowest end of the project, will they be able to bring big boats from Lake Michigan up the river to a public docking opportunity here in Grand Rapids?
That is not, that is not part of the vision. In answer to your question, that would require dredging of much of the river, and as I recall, Eagle sort of denied that request.
Commissioner Diaz.
Good morning. So if I remember correctly, you know, when you all were doing the public comment period of this a while back, before I was a commissioner, I definitely commented in favor of it. I think it’s a great idea. I just have one question. I see here in your Slide 6, where it says that project has no impact on flooding. I would imagine that they did consider this, but I have seen reports from scientists and experts that say that one of the issues in the long term that Michigan is going to have to deal with in regards to climate change is that we’re going to have periods of a lot of precipitation, essentially, where, you know, instead of having these storms that are spread out throughout the year, they’re happening very frequently and a lot of downpours. And so I would imagine that they’d considered those types of, that type of future projections in the letters and reports that they did, but I just wanted to confirm that they did, you know, consider that.
Now, it’s a great question, and from a technical perspective, that means are we designing to the 100-year flood level or the 500-year flood level? And the city, to date, has been at the 100-year flood level, and this, when we say no impact on flooding, that’s what we mean. We also mean, though, that when you model where the water goes and how it flows, there literally is no height increase based on this project. And you might go, “Well, how in the world is that possible? You’re putting fill-in and these amenities, et cetera.” Well, keep in mind that those dams each, you know, in total, it’s 500 cubic yards of concrete that will be taken out of the river by withdrawing those dams, so we’re effectively just trading one for the other. But as far as the 500-year limit goes, that’s still work that the city is engaged in with FEMA and certainly talking about, but to date, we’re only held to that 100-level standard. But what I want to leave you with is, the project doesn’t bump the water at all on either of those standards. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments from Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, a few of us were at an event last night, Black Voices at the River, and I know that there are a lot of citizens groups that are engaged in this, and there is anxiety that this public investment will happen without the benefit of the local community. And, you know, I imagine that that’s true in places further away from the river. My district is fairly close, and just this anxiety, I think that the, I’m really excited about this. I think it’s just, I mean, I love the idea of facing the river and the engagement that we’ll have there, and also the economic development that would happen with tourism. How do we, how do we gain? So some of the anxiety is just, can we get access to contracts that are going to happen? But some of it is just, is this relevant to my community? And so how do we expand that relevancy? Tourism, I think, works in our minds to think of how it might benefit us economically, but it may not be something that people in Sparta or the southeast side of Grand Rapids see as in their benefit. So how do we express this in a way? Some of that, I think, is our work, but, you know, how do we express that further in getting relevancy to the rest of the community?
Yeah, no, it’s a great, appreciate you raising the issue. We’ve done, so we have a core group between the city and Grand Rapids Whitewater that meets every other week, and it’s the engineers and the, actually, the city engineer and then our own people, or the hydraulic engineer that we’ve hired to do this, the expert and others. And Sierra Atkins sits at that table, and that matters, because she’s there specifically and purposefully to represent sort of, how are we making certain that voices are heard in this project? Now, one person can’t do that for everyone. I get that, but it’s better than it often was in the past. And we have thought a great deal about that. Now, with our project, that most of what can be done is done in construction. Not only, frankly, not really the construction in the river, that’s not key. What’s key is all these side projects. And so if suddenly we’re doing 100 million, $200 million of projects, that’s where you can really make, you know, make it work. And I think that these groups galvanizing and pushing the issue has helped, has made people pay attention, and it’s in the contracts, and it’s, you know, we’re trying to push it in that way. That’s not, that’s only part of your question.
Right.
The second part is the public. I mean, we really believe that, and you’d know the surveys better than I do, but the surveys are startling at, you know, 80% of the folks, particularly kids, within close neighborhoods to downtown, you know, don’t have access to outdoor recreation. It’s certainly water recreation. Haven’t been to Lake Michigan, haven’t been in the woods up north. It’s just tough because of transportation, et cetera. We believe this gives an opportunity for that outdoor water recreation in a way that it’s never been here. I mean, the YMCA is working with a museum to talk about swimming lessons for, and water safety lessons for kids that can then access the river and get through it. We’ve had an educational process since we began. In fact, Matt, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, certainly, yeah. So for the last three years, we’ve partnered with the Grand Rapids Public Museum and Elgro, the Lower Grand River Organization of Watersheds, and have done a summer science and leadership camp. So last year, I believe, we had 18 students from around the entire county that actually come for two weeks, and they get an opportunity to spend part of a day with the mayor, with some of our engineers, with folks from Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc., and Experience Grand Rapids, just learning about this project and how it truly does take every aspect of the community. So we are continuing with that again this year. The students also have a chance to get out in the river with some of the scientists and pick up a mussel. Many of them have come to the first day of the program, and they say they’ve never been in the river. They don’t think it’s safe to touch the river. Within three, four days, they’re out digging in the ground, trying to pick up mussels and fish. So there’s all of those opportunities that we could continue to expand upon, and I think as you look at the broader discussions about like the Grand River Greenway, then we can start to pull in all of these other communities and think, we need to think of this as like a watershed approach, where everything kind of funnels into this river, and so when we start to broaden the downtown scope, we can get a lot more of those benefits.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. First a comment and then a question. You know, coupling from Commissioner Baker’s questions and thoughts, I would at least, I appreciate that there is, that Ms. Atkins is on this board, and while I can appreciate that’s better than what’s done in the past, doesn’t mean it can’t be better still. And given the complexity of the efforts you’re trying to undertake and how the goal of ensuring that the Whitewater restoration project is something that everyone can experience benefit from is actually going to require action beyond construction, I would just urge you to consider expanding the role of influence and input so that we can harness creative energies to ensure that that happens. My question is, you know, we’ve learned a fair amount about dam maintenance now in Kent County because of one that we own in Lowell, or in the Lowell area, and I was wondering, who owns the current infrastructure, and what is the cost of maintaining that infrastructure versus maintaining this natural infrastructure, so to speak?
And I’d love to address both parts of your comment, if you don’t mind. First of all, I didn’t mean to, I may have, I don’t mean to mislead you at all. The group I’m talking about is not a board at all. It’s the technical group going through the regulatory stuff and all of that. And my point was that at that level, where it’s mostly engineers and talk about, even at that level, we wanted to make certain that we had an expanded voice. And so that was, that’s why I raised that. The boards on this, on the Greenway project, et cetera, as I understand it, and I’m not involved, but they’ve been very, very conscious of the issue and are attempting to make those equitable, both in face and in work and function. So in answer to your question, it’s a good question. The current dams require no maintenance. In fact, they haven’t done maintenance on them, and they’re not even checked, because they don’t, interestingly enough, they don’t entrap enough water to matter to the state, so they’re not, they don’t have to do the kind of regular checkups that you probably do in Lowell. We expect the amenity that we’re building will be similar. The reality is, is these engineers, first of all, they’re very impressive in their knowledge, but the structures they build are effectively made stronger by the flow of water rather than weakened, and so the idea is to create something that doesn’t require maintenance. And we looked at one in Glenwood Springs, Colorado, that they had built some 15 years ago. And keep in mind, what they do basically is, you put a row of boulders where you want that to occur, the water runs over those boulders, and then you put, in their case, they put concrete block on the bottom, out of respect to Eagle and the State of Michigan. We’re using natural rock, but it’s flat rock, so the water comes over, hits that rock, and then it’s going to curve in a certain way, based on how they engineer the thing. And that’s basically how they do it. Well, they place those rocks in a way that the material behind it and what the wings on the side of it help reinforce the material rather than corrupt it. So we don’t believe there’ll be significant maintenance. Now, we’ve included in the project budget, I think... Now, we've included in the project budget, I think, was it $80,000 a year maybe for maintenance, ongoing maintenance that would, would occur, yeah, and the monitoring, that monitoring that we believe would need to be, occur. But so that's, that's, that's how we think it will go. The, the key to this though, is you can't just put a row of rocks in or, or do some things that you might do in a, in a smaller stream because given ice flow, given the depth of this river, given the width of this river, it's apt to move. And so you do need to worry about stability, and that was one of the factors we had to meet in this design.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Adory.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I've never been a huge fan of this project, as you probably know, not because I don't think it's kind of cool looking, it's just because of the practicality of the matters and the costs and so forth. I think the first time we heard about this, the cost was going to be in that $5 million range when they first came in. And I don't know what it is now, my guess is it's going to be $100 million, maybe.
So again, we, the project's been divided in two. And so there's the upper reach and the lower reach. To do both parts, including the hydraulic structure, meaning replacing the Sixth Street Dam with a structure that would keep the lamprey out in a different way, you know, we projected 45 million for that several years ago. It's likely more than that frankly today because that was, you know. And, and the lower reach that we're talking about now, we've got reasonable projections that look like it'll be an $18 million project.
One of the things you mentioned is this will give inner-city kids more of an opportunity to explore the river, pick up mussels, swimming lessons, you know, we can do all that right now. I grew up on the northeast side, I lived on Cedar Street and College area. I used to walk down there all the time, I fished my whole childhood, I was down there fishing. And later in life, out of boats, you know, I enjoyed it. It's one of the top 10 urban fisheries in America right now, which is unbelievable. It's, that's a huge deal. And my biggest fear is I still haven't figured out how you can have all this recreational activity and maintain this incredible fishery, because if you've ever fished down there right now, it's a process. You get a fish on, it's not like you're fishing 30 feet in front of you, you get a fish on, that thing's 100 yards downstream. And everybody has to work in concert to make sure we get that fish land. It's, it's quite a process. And that's with no boats, inner tubes, kayaks or anything else in the water. So I don't know how you can, you know, blend those two groups together. To me, it's almost impossible. So you can either have one or the other, but I don't think you can have both, especially during critical times during spring and fall migration. It's almost like you'd almost want to shut that down for recreational stuff and just let fishermen use it. But these are all things you've heard of, I'm sure you're dealing with the fishermen and so on and so forth. I just think the cost of this thing is what spooked me because I, to me, if we want to make it look cool, we could drop in some rip rap and call it good. You know, we'd create the rapids. And that's kind of what the coffer dams currently do, they create that little bit of rapid look, so it makes it look a little bit more spectacular. To revert back to where we were, back, if we still had the original change in topography where, where we had that good drop off and we had that rapids to this day, would we be doing any of this? Is this about economic development or is it about making the river look cool, I guess?
You, you, there's a lot there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I, and I'd love to chat privately, anytime you want to.
You know what, we could take this, let's do that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I would enjoy that.
The fishermen part, though, I'd like to answer too.
Yeah, and first of all, I, I keep focused, we're focused on the lower reach, which doesn't touch the Sixth Street Dam. So that fishery isn't touched, it stays exactly as it is for this project. That second project is more about replacing the lamprey barrier, because the Sixth Street Dam acts as a lamprey barrier, but it's not terribly effective and it's 100 years old and everybody's worried about it corrupting and falling apart and lamprey getting upriver. So it's about how do you replace that? How do you make that better? And that's, that's the focus of the upper reach, although we would love to put in recreational elements when that happens as well. But let me set that aside because that's honestly years from now, right? And certainly won't be me standing here talking to you about that. The lower reach itself, in fact, improves the fishery because it, it puts in habitat for fish and it puts in, some of the, the reason there's fill in the thing is it puts a ramp in the river. There is a natural 18-foot drop in the river that's been buried by these dams. You take out the dams, well, now what are you going to do for grade control and to make certain the fish can get upriver because the velocity is going to be phenomenal and it's going to push both rock and fish back? So you put in these, these basically ramps out of material to allow them to go. What it will do is increase, the fishery for the jumping fish stays the same.
It's a natural fish ladder.
Yeah, it is that, exactly. And the, and the fishery for the jumping fish stays the same, the salmon and the steelhead. But the fishing for non-jumping fish suddenly becomes possible and good. Walleye, bass, sturgeon, there literally can be a sturgeon fishery here in, you know, when they reach sexual maturity in 30 years, if, if we, if we get this project completed.
Good luck getting a license to take out a sturgeon right now.
Yeah, well, exactly. I, that's exactly right. They are in the river today, as you know, 126 of them or something. But, but so, so, so there, and, and do I think it's cool and a tourist, yeah, I do, both. Do I think that it helps local kids and families? I, I do because of its location and where it is. Is it something that makes our, our area, our, you know, West Michigan, Grand Rapids, Kent County distinctive? It certainly is because there's, there's nothing like it in the Midwest. So, so I, I don't, I don't want to go on, but let's chat.
No, that's fine, I appreciate Steve.
I would really enjoy speaking.
I would like to talk to you a little bit further. I just, I think, you know, as a businessman and looking at this thing from a, you know, dollars and cents, ROI is everything. And if we do get the type of return that you're speculating on, that would be fantastic. But I just don't see it personally. But we'll, I guess we'll wait and see, but there's a lot of steps that have to take place yet, it sounds like, before this thing even gets for sure. If you had to put a percentage on the chances of this thing going through to fruition at this point, is it 70%? Do you think 80% or?
I have no idea.
No clue? Okay. You can't say 100% right now for sure.
No, I cannot, cannot say that.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
He's a lawyer, you know, he would never say 100%. All right. Commissioner Ponstein.
Chair Stack, Steve and Matt, thanks for being here today. So you talk about the lower reach and the upper reach, and when people hear that all the dams are going to be removed, so you're saying the Sixth Street Dam is going to be staying intact?
Yeah, sorry. And again, I'm sorry for that confusion. We're so used to now talking only about the lower reach. The lower reach has the four low head dams, those are the ones being removed as part of this project.
Okay, but going then forward to the future, the sixth is going to stay?
We don't know that. So if the upper reach, the upper reach again is in the hands of the Great Lakes Fishery, Fishery Commission, which is, which primary job is to prevent the lamprey from, from spawning and getting, taking over the fishery in, in the Great Lakes. So they're, they're, they're focused on what's the best place and style for a lamprey barrier. And that will decide it. It could be the Sixth Street Dam, they could rebuild it, they could build something on top of it. We think the better idea is up near Ann Street with this hydraulic movable thing that could drop when it's not spawning season and stay up when it is.
So if it is, let's say a fish. So what's the future of the fish ladder then? That, that wouldn't be needed then, right?
Wouldn't be needed, but it would stay. It's considered a piece of art and, and water will run through it. The question is, will the fish use it when they can get upriver through, you know, the now natural rapids that we've rebuilt? And, and it's, you know, who knows, right? But, but it will, it, the intent is to have it stay.
We guys just put a water slide in there.
Exactly.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So my children went to Sea Frost, we went to the fish ladder. Many of the children that experienced that field trip had no exposure to the river, like you talked about. Are you doing partnerships with environmental schools to bring, I guess, when I, when I hear this presentation, I think of cost, you know, doing something at the public museum, you probably have to pay for the camp that you're involved in. Again, thinking of my experience with my children going to the fish ladder through Sea Frost, are you having partnerships with schools like that, goodwill?
Yeah, it's a great question. And the summer science program, I didn't mention that, but there is no cost to the students. In fact, we actually do pay a $200 stipend to the students that complete the program. But we get students by reaching out to the different environmental schools. So again, through the partnership with Elgro and the public museum, we try to get out to all, not just the environmental schools, but actually all of the schools, as many as we can in the county, to encourage those participation. The other thing I would say is too, is we worked very closely in the design process of this with the public museum, knowing that they've got a substantial reinvestment and revitalization of their riverfront. Part of that was making sure that the design of the river facilitated students and young kids, young people getting down into the river safely. So we did work closely with their engineers and architects on their project as well to try to coordinate that so that, so that there is opportunities for them in the urban side of the downtown core to get down and touch the river and not be worried about swift currents and, and, you know, these dangerous dams, so.
All right. Yes, Commissioner DeWort. We'll, we'll get them all, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I share some of Commissioner Antor's concern with dollar signs, but if this project proceeds, my concern would be what safety measures do we have in place for kids that may not have had access to waterfront before and now we're going to be in the river? And is there like timing where the, the riverfront would be open and closed? Like can people kayak in the middle of the night, that kind of thing?
Your question reminded me that I didn't answer an earlier question that I will, but and the city owns the dams. Somebody asked who owns the dams. The city owns the dams, but the waterway itself, there's public trust, so we, we all have an interest in the waterway. And the individual property owners own to the middle of the river technically, but the waterway again is controlled by public trust. It meant though, that we had to get, we had to get easements from every one of those property owners to be able to do the project. So, and the reason, your question reminded me of that, is the fire department in the city of Grand Rapids is already starting to undertake training because they've not had to deal, I mean, except outside of downtown, they've not had to deal with a lot of water issues. And I watch them train, I live on the river and Brendan and I live on the river, and we look down and watch them train along Pearl Street there. They're gearing up to have the rescue, the safety, the, and they have it now, but they know it will be far more than it will be. I can't tell you that, I mean, inviting people into the river means that you've got a safety issue, no question. Is it 100% that nobody will ever get hurt? Well, no, I, you know, nobody can guarantee that. But given, given the efforts, both of all, the design, I mean, the design is made so that once you get through the amenity, you're in a pool, can kind of gather yourself and get up, and there's access to the shoreline nearby. That's how the thing was designed. That's the advantage of engineered waves versus just having waves created wherever they might happen. And, and in addition to that, city, fire department, city police, the museum staff, the YMCA, all, they are focused on this issue and looking at it. Have we answered it? Entirely no, but are people aware that it's something to be, to pay attention to? Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, the firefighters, I had a conversation with them where they told me that they actually currently save more people from the river than they do from burning houses in Grand Rapids. So they will be building on experience there. But I had, I had one question about the, I assume the engineering of the rapids has taken into account where the bridges are, that we're, that they're not shooting someone straight into a pier or something like that, right?
Actually, that was, it's a great question because that's one of the most significant engineering challenges. Many, many of the models assume an open river. And we, of course, have, how many bridges, is it six that cross?
Seven in here and I think 22 bridge piers that we have to be concerned about.
And, and so it's certainly been a big part of the modeling and where these go. The, the one that still gave me a little angst was there is a wave before the carousel appears. That's the only one that leads anywhere near that kind of thing, but the water doesn't lead there. The water pushes you out toward the middle and I've been assured that that's not an issue there. And the museum's aware of that as well, so.
Don't want that to keep me up at night, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm glad.
But then can you just speak briefly? I've heard you speak before and I'm, I really love this project, but I had not heard about this going from 11, what, rapids down to four. Can you just, you know, give us a little bit about how that process happened?
The, and Chair's asking me to keep my comments short.
Well, we're getting awful close to that lecture on ripperian rice and I just didn't want to get there.
But let me try to be quick. That, that's when we gathered everybody because we, we, for years, our people stood on a chair and shouted about modeling and manning quotients and all this stuff that I don't understand. And the state stood on a different chair yelling back and, and there was no meeting of the mind on how the science ought to work. So Matt and I went out to Colorado with Mike Stahl from the city and said to the engineers, we either have to design something that fits within their model, whether it's correct scientifically or not, or we're going to walk away because they're not going to approve, they're not accepting your argument. And, and at that point is when we gathered these folks, worked through the new design. And, and the whole idea was, okay, we'll compromise, 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 but we're not going to cross the line of we no longer have something interesting. We no longer have something that, that will meet the economic development and tourism goals. And we think we've hit that spot, the state hasn't yet agreed, but, but we think we're right in that spot where we keep an interesting amenity and yet, and yet have trimmed, have trimmed those, the things that interfere with the, the river's, you know, natural state as much as we could, so.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to cut anyone off if they do have any comments or questions anymore. All right. If not, thank you so much for the presentation. Always good to see you, Steve. We'll keep our eyes on the river, look for those rocks to start hitting the water.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
All right. The next item on our agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. If anyone wishes to address the board, this time it is for agenda items only. And so if you wish to address us this time and not the next time, please identify the item on the agenda that you are addressing. You have up to three minutes, please identify yourself and you, where you live, and we will proceed from there. Thank you. Good morning.
How you doing, everyone? My name is DeAndre Jones, I stay on the west side of the city of Grand Rapids. First of all, I would like to speak.
What item are you adj, are you addressing?
Oh, I am adj, I was just about to say that before you interrupted me. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Board Chair. But I was about to speak on the grant for easement to the airport. I don't know exactly what the grant is for, but any type of grant funding that the county gets, we definitely fund an esports lounge or lab for our constituents that fly into our city.
You are awful good.
I had to, it's the perfect, it's like, it's like the universe has told me to do this. Hey, it's crazy. But I, I say this because the corporation shy that I've been working with to build an infrastructure and ecosystem for our state, for our county, for our city, for surrounding cities on the east side, they actually help find grants for corporations, for the airport, they help find grants for any entity, any type of business, any type of nonprofit. And so if we ever get any type of grant funding, I would like for you guys to continuously fund an esports lab and lounge for people that fly in our city, people that are flying out of our city, because sometimes sitting there waiting for those flights are very long and you get bored and you don't want to sit on your phone all day. Sometimes you might want to play the game and there is a gaming lounge. And so I would like to create that beautiful experience for our constituents. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, oh, I'm sorry. Good morning.
Was this time also set aside to speak to the previous presentation?
Yes.
So Duane Grader, Kent County. First and foremost, I'm opposed to spending any money on changing the river. I don't know if Mr., excuse me, Hecock is still here or not, but I would challenge him that, he said in one of his statements that dams kill people. I would suggest that maybe people kill people because I don't think the dams themselves can do that. It's just the behavior of the people that are in the water. Which also brings me to the point that Mr. Boar made earlier, that it looks like we're bringing out a lot of liability. We've already reached out to fire departments to do special training because we anticipate there's going to be a lot of accidents in the river by bringing more people in. So I mean, is this something we want to be responsible for, having brought more people to the river to die? I just don't know if that makes a lot of sense to me. Also, he said in his statement that he had got a survey of some sort of 600 comments. To me, I think, all of you know the size of Kent County, certainly more than 6,000 or 60,000. So yet his survey, whatever it may be and whatever target audience that he used, he said he ended up with 10% of that, excuse me, yeah, 10% of that audience was were opposed to this. I'd like to know if the commissioners here that do live in the outlying areas, as some of you have stated, have actually gone to the constituents and asked them if they're in favor of paying taxes to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, we will close public comment and move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Burrow for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I'd like to move today's consent agenda, please.
Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions or comments on the motion? I see none. It is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 21 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is an item for closed session. My assuming that that passes, my apologies to our folks who are here, but that would require us to go into session to excuse you until we're done with that accession and then we'll bring folks back in. And for the motion, I will call on Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I move to go into closed session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act to consult with the county's attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy concerning pending litigation. The county's attorney has advised the board that an open meeting on this issue would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement position of the county.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioners Sparks. All right. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Could I comment on just this process?
On the motion to go into closed session?
Well, yeah, just curious, can we give the audience at least an idea of the time that this may require? Just, you know, if we're going to-
You're asking me to predict the time of this group's-
Well, I've been through several, I've been through several of the, I just want them to know that typically these things are, take care of within a half an hour or so.
I would anticipate that we would be able to do this within a half hour, maybe less, but that is much more up to you folks than me.
Yeah, I agree. I just wanted them to know it's probably not going to be a two-hour session.
No, it better not be.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to move into closed session, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
At, fire was staged out at the road, but nobody was coordinating a response to get the victims out from an area that maybe had been initially surveyed by law enforcement, but not cleared. So we purchased. Ballistics protection for the fire departments so that they're able to send some folks. Under the, uh, action of police, uh, to, that would be another flavor of some of...
... I know when the public reads our agendas that are posted and, and this, there's not a lot of detail, a lot of time, and that clarified a lot of things that it's just not more money being passed out. It's actually for, for things that are...
Yeah. The only other point, if I may, uh, would be that, you know, those priority areas, the percentage at which that we are essentially, the, the funding is earmarked to go towards, that is increasing. We're actually getting a little bit less money every year, about ten, eleven thousand less every year for this particular grant. Our discretion is getting less and less, uh, and it's getting much more...
Thank you, Matt. He is our emergency manager director. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If not, this is a roll call vote. Madam clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Seventeen, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty-one yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Seventeen is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to our next item on the agenda, which is the second opportunity for public comment. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners with respect to matters within our general jurisdiction, you may do so now. Uh, you don't even have to identify an agenda item. Uh, you still only have three minutes and you still have to identify who you are and relive.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Deandre Jones, stay in the city of Grand Rapids. Uh, where do I start with this three minutes? It's crazy. I got a lot I want to say. Uh, first of all, excited to bring esports to Kent County. Um, I got to work at the car show because I'm a committee member for the West Grand Neighborhood Organization. And, uh, I got to network with everybody. I got to talk to all of the fancy cars, even the guys who make the exotic Ferraris and all of that stuff. Those guys follow my Instagram and my business page. I told them I'm gonna get those cars one day, so they were like, well, we'll see. But I will get there. I will get there. I, I definitely see myself in a Ferrari or, or a Lambo or something like that, driving around the city. I'm gonna really get there one day. But I actually ran into Showspan, who's actually the organization that puts that, um, the car show on, and they actually wanted to create an esports experience, but they didn't have the resources and the people to help them do it. So I'm excited for the 2024 car show because I would help them put, put together esports experience at the 2024 car show at the DeVos place. Hey, I'm gonna get pretty excited. I gotta hit a dance move for that because it's crazy. And then I gotta, uh, working, uh, just being able to bring esports. I finally, uh, made some progress with Grand Rapids Public Schools. Uh, that's moving forward. Um, I got to connect with the superintendents yesterday. I went to Grand Valley State University. I wanted to go network. They were doing, uh, cover letters and resumes, and I didn't have a cover letter or a resume. I just wanted to go network. So I just went to go speak to there. I ran into the superintendent for Wyoming Public Schools, Hudsonville Public Schools, Rockford, and I ran into some staff from Grand Rapids Public Schools. And so, uh, I got to invite them to the event that we're hosting at the Four Star Theater on April twenty-second. I ran into Jose Douglas, who's the chief, uh, he's a sheriff for our police department, and they're looking to get involved with the esports competition. So I'm looking at our local police department and our Kent County sheriffs involved to truly strengthen our community, to truly build some type of trust and some type of understanding, because I'm tired of people in the hood. I'm tired of people of our underserved communities not being able to understand the difference that, yeah, they may work, they may have a badge, they may do a job that you want to do, but they do the same things that you do on a daily basis. We just walk, have different walks of life. And I really want people to understand that. I want to build the economy up. I want to strengthen our communities. I want to do cool innovative things, and I want to be a leader. I want to show the world what I can do. I want to show the universe what I can do. I want to show my Kent County Commissioners, my state politicians and my city commissioners what I can do. Uh, and I'm a leader, and I'm excited for the work I'm going to be putting in. I'm excited for the work I'll continue to do. I'm just excited to really change our community. I believe I'll transform our community in an equitable, sustainable way, and I'll be able to get the police department to do cool things and do esports events. Also, if, when we get to the airport, I would like to, uh, for the Kent County sheriffs, for you guys to host a competition where we can compete against other constituents. Thank you.
Wow. I just have to say, your persistence and passion's inspiring.
Can we get the livestream going?
I believe... It is up? Uh, it, is it not up?
It's up.
It is up.
Hi, my name is Doug Lee, and I'm a resident, uh, for thirty-four years in Cascade. Um, I just passed out to you details of an event at Grand Valley State University this week with our very own Health Department listed as a partner. On the first page, you will notice the Health Department logo listed as the partner. This is important, as I will discuss later. I'd like to read just a couple of days from the syllabus of this event that this, we're using taxpayer dollars on. On Wednesday, which is yesterday, Wellbeing Wednesday, was kinky karaoke. Join us for a fun night of sex-related songs and condom cupcakes. Bring your friends and roommates, and let's see what we've got. On Thursday, which is today, it's Less Thrive Thursday. Sometimes we all need, for a good time, to add a little something to the mix. Join us for an event where we will learn about sex toys, strap-ons, and assisted devices as are fun, as they mean, may need to be necessary for various populations. High school sex ed classes usually lack adequate sexual health education for those of the LBD, LGBTQ-plus community. To address this, learn openly, openly about gender, sexuality, affirming language, barrier methods, and how to prepare for sexual health clinic visits and more. Although the GVSU can do what they want as they please, using taxpayer monies is not appropriate. Adam London has convinced many here that he's a family man. Adam London is a man who is driven by special interest groups and not representative taxpayers who pay him. So let's go back to the logo. Calls were made. Visible partnerships of the websites were removed, so the optics of this event is hidden from seventeen of you. But not the involvement and use of taxpayer dollars. Most times, the cover-up is worse than the actual event. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, hi, I'm Marcus Ringnalda, Gaines Township resident and founder and president of the Friends of Four Star. Uh, here, first of all, to tell you about an event at the theater, uh, this weekend, twelve hours of family-friendly programming. Uh, we're gonna have food and pastries from local restaurants. We are gonna have, uh, a free screening of the Black Panther film, six hours of Latin music, um, magic and poetry throughout the day. So we are open. We are celebrating Phase One. Um, but also here, uh, sadly for the second meeting in a row to address public comments, uh, made against this by now a former commissioner, calling it, calling the project, uh, which received a half million dollars of ARPA funding out of the 1.6 million, uh, applied for, a long shot and, um, total violation of integrity and ethics by the Republican leadership. Um, again, uh, mind-boggling to me. This project was in your top twenty-five. Um, and the subject of five years of community-engaged planning. The first question through this whole ARPA process is what other planning efforts have supported your idea? 1.4 million dollars, uh, spent studying by third-party consultants. What kind of investments do we want to see on South Division? And again, the Four Star Theater comes up as a highly equitable development for the community that has been neglected for decades. Um, and it's literally in our city's master plan. Um, and the problem is these statements being made publicly as collateral damage from this process are harmful to the private fundraising efforts that inevitably come between the bookends of public funding for projects like this. So, um, my request is, you know, you've held, uh, number one, I, the process, the process was good. Um, it inevitably was gonna have some deal-making, um, some partisan deal-making, but you did a phenomenal job of spreading money equitably throughout this community. I recognize that. You all, many of you know, I've been here for just about every step of the way. And tireless advocacy is the way we get our ideas out there. Um, so I know you have held, uh, some money back from your ARPA funding. Um, I have a project that's being actively harmed. And, uh, my hope is that you would consider restoring the funding to the Four Star Theater at the requested amount. Um, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of Kent County, of course. And more importantly, I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. That's my real identity. I want to thank Commissioner Burrell for that very powerful invocation to our meeting here. I'm here today just to, uh, commend and speak out for Black History Month. Black History Month. First of all, just want to remind everyone, again, at 3:20 East Fulton, just a couple miles from where we're sitting and standing today, on the average, every month, they're murdering one hundred and twenty of our fellow citizens. Nationwide, one thousand African-American children are murdered every day. Since 1973, murder of black children in the womb outnumber all other causes of death in that community. Last time I was here, I spoke about Martin Luther King Jr. We just had his birthday, remembered? Again, he said this, "How can the dream survive if we murder the children? Every aborted baby is like a slave in the womb of his or her mother. The mother decides his or her fate." And then I just wanted to mention several other prominent African-American leaders, both past and present, who were against murder in the womb. Sojourner Truth, Frederick Douglass, Fannie Lou Hammer, Harriet Tubman, or she was the Underground Railroad, Dr. Mildred Fay Jefferson, Louisiana State Senator Katrina Jackson, Benjamin Watson, and Alveda King, Martin Luther King's granddaughter. Very outspoken. One last one. Dr. Lady, uh, Dr. Mildred Jefferson. She made history as the black, first black woman to graduate from Harvard Medical School. She also made history as a founder of the pro-life movement and one of the first presidents of the National Right to Life Committee. She was, by President Reagan's own words, was the one that used, uh, was used to change his perspective from a pro-death politician to a pro-life. By the way, if you, anyone listening to me needs assistance, we have two ministries that can help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? I do not see anyone else, so we will go ahead and close public comment. Next item is our administrator's report. Al?
Yeah, I just have a couple items today. Uh, in the digest that I sent out yesterday, there's two links to surveys. Uh, one is from Experienced Grand Rapids. Commissioner Hildenbrand and myself represent Kent County on the Experienced Grand Rapids Board of Directors, and they're looking to get community input that will help direct decisions made on improving, uh, services and amenities, uh, for those who visit our community. Also, uh, KCAA, uh, has a survey, a community need survey, which is very important, uh, for how they, uh, as you know, they have millions of dollars in grant funding that's targeted to meet community needs. And so, uh, getting, uh, getting a great community response to that, uh, would also be, uh, very much appreciated. Uh, also, uh, I think, uh, I wanted to let you know, please watch your inboxes. We have an updated PowerPoint coming out, uh, on the Insurance Authority. We plan to bring that to you, uh, the first set of meetings in March for approval. Uh, we did update it based on the two additional sessions that we had, uh, with Commissioners, uh, since we had new Commissioners join the board. And if I could get your input, uh, if you could send it within about a week of getting that, I would greatly appreciate it. So we can make sure we keep everybody updated as we start to move through that, uh, process. Also, I just wanted to mention that, uh, Commissioner DeBoer did, uh, blurt this last night, uh, that there, uh, of this sex ed week, uh, at Grand Valley, and I just wanted to give some facts about this situation. Uh, Kent County has not financially participated in the past or present with this event. In the past, we did provide STI testers, as we do for many organizations throughout the community. And, and this year, in fact, we didn't provide STI testers because Grand Valley had their own. We did pass along the state vouchers that we get for this purpose, uh, to Grand Valley. And so, uh, I just wanted to make sure everybody had an update on the status of that and what the Health Department's involvement, uh, this year, uh, was. So, and that's all.
Or wasn't.
Correct. So that's all I have for today.
Okay. Now we're to reports. Anyone have any reports? Commissioner LeGrand?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, apropos of our Whitewater, uh, presentation this morning, Commissioner Boujack and I were at the, uh, Grand Valley Metro Council Meeting last week, and we did have a, a great presentation from the Elgro Group that he referenced, uh, in that presentation. And those Commissioners who, um, do have, uh, touch the river especially, I would just want you to know that on their staff, they do have an urban waters ambassador. So they do have someone who is, uh, primed to talk to people in the community about access to the river, health of the river, all kinds of issues like that. And, and there's lots of information there about the educational program. Very easy to find, Elgro, online. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to give a report about the Area Agency on Aging. I think I said that right, of West Michigan. Um, our meeting was talking about the direct care workers and elder abuse, and of course, advocacy for the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? You?
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy?
Um, I have a brief report from the Board of Public Works. Um, we met last week, and we approved, um, two grants, um, that will be coming to us from Eagle, and they'll likely be, um, before the Board of Commissioners. But one of them is for some robotics equipment at the recycling center that will help, um, sort all the recycling that comes in, and it can be programmed, um, over time, and it really saves us, um, from needing additional staffing, which is very difficult to get there. So it'll be a, a great thing in improving the recycling center. And there was also a grant for, um, some recycling equipment for the North Kent Transfer Station. So we'll see that coming to our board soon. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else reports? I just have one brief report. Commissioner LeGrand, Commissioner DeBoer, and I met with the, um, uh, Community Mental Health Network 180 Board. Uh, it is, uh, moving ahead on the progress for our new crisis stabilization system and unit, and we're excited about that, uh, becoming a reality finally. Uh, but, uh, it continues to be a challenge in that environment. Uh, funding will continue to be, uh, difficult for us to meet the expectations, uh, no, the demands of the state with respect to what services are to be required. Um, and as we go into an environment where the, uh, competition for employees becomes increasingly difficult, uh, our ability to make sure we meet those needs so that there are staff to do the work, uh, that will be a huge challenge. And so, um, I, I know you get sick of hearing me reporting about how difficult it is in this environment, in this space, uh, but it will continue to be a challenge. So... Anyone else? If not, we're on to miscellaneous. Anyone have miscellaneous? I know. Just toying with the guy. Commissioner Antor?
We love each other, I tell ya. Uh, the invocation this morning, I, I loved it. Um, you know, I'm trying to think of Jesus Christ sitting down with his disciples and saying, you know what, if we're gonna start this project, we gotta make sure we have funding for it. Otherwise, we gotta tap the brakes. That's basically what I got of that. So it's good to know, 2,000 years ago, our Lord and Savior wasn't into deficit spending. Um, GVSU came up in discussion. Just wanted to remind people that, yes, we do fund. GVSU is one of our fifteen state colleges. They just got a huge increase this year. Um, I think we're up to about 1.4 billion dollars, um, that we spend currently with, uh, higher education funding. So there is some money going out, a lot of money.
Just to clarify, you mean the state funds? Yeah.
Yes, state funding. Um, and the fact that our logo was on the information that GVSU was putting out, that implies that we are, um, donating, whether it's in-kind donation. It's still, I, I don't think it's appropriate at all. Um, they don't need our money. Uh, they're flush with cash, as all our state colleges are. Absolutely flush. University of Michigan has 17 billion dollars in their endowment fund, and, uh, which is almost three times as much as the state of Michigan has in their general fund. So, um, I think we gotta be really cognizant about those types of issues with our Health Department. We gotta keep them off those pages, um, or else there's gonna be some, um, consequences for that, I believe. So, thank you.
We usually don't exchange back and forth. There'd be just a point of clarification. Just, that was just called to our attention. We're not even sure how that logo got there or why, but we are, we are exploring that.
Understood. I appreciate you acted on it. Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Somebody over here had miscellaneous. Commissioner Diaz?
Um, a couple of quick points. I would just like to state for the record that I am a, uh, I very much appreciate the fact that, uh, Michiganders are able to participate in direct democracy. Um, the people of Michigan spoke last year when it comes to reproductive health, reproductive health rights, and I'm very thankful that we were able to get that point across, uh, and succeed in that. Secondly, I would like to express public support for our Health Department. Um, I'm a big advocate of health in any way possible. Um, and I, for one, am gonna be doing all I can to support our Health Department in any way that they need. And finally, to draw things, um, a little bit closer to home here, in my district, um, I would very much like to invite you all to the Four Star Theater on Saturday. I will be there, um, and spending as much time as I can there. Um, I was not a Commissioner last year, so I was not, again, part of that ARPA process. Um, I have a meeting with State Representative John Fitzgerald next week, Thursday, in which I will be, um, asking him to, to try and get state funding, not only for the Four Star Theater, but also for the diatribe. Um, and moving forward, I am hopeful, you know, as somebody who was born and raised in Kent County and grew up in the district that I represent, um, I am hopeful that, moving forward, we can do all we can to encourage and help, uh, economic development in the area. Um, these neighborhoods have been left behind for a long time. Um, and I would welcome your support, um, whether it's here at our level, at the county level, the city level, the state level, the federal level, um, to do all we can to support these communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein, I think, was next.
Thank you, Chair Stack. So I got the list of several of you are gonna be going to the NACO Legislative Conference, uh, coming up in a few days. Uh, for the people that be the first time attending to that, um, there's an orientation up front. You'll learn about what NACO does and what services it provides to our state and to our local county, and the resources that are available to you as county commissioners. Just want to point out a couple things. The first couple days of it, a lot of the standing committees will meet. If you've got a topic that you're interested in, to sit on one of those is just a good time to listen. They bring in speakers from across the country on policy issues that are important to counties across the nation. Uh, if you're really interested in ever wanting to serve on a standing committee, those appointments are made through the Michigan Association of Counties. So anyone in our state that wants to have a seat at any of those, I think there's seven standing committees, uh, they get appointed through us, and it's just a matter of putting your name through. So I just, uh, hope you get a chance to look and listen to the things that are going on there. Um, I sat on three of them. Uh, the one that I'm gonna plug is the Arts and Cultural Commission. Uh, it's a lively meeting. I think it's on Sunday morning. Uh, so if you get a chance, you'll see me. I'm one of the vice chairs of that committee, uh, as well as a vice chair of the Public Land Steering Committee. And that seems to be an odd one for, for Michigan, but just to put it in focus, Michigan is the second-largest payment-in-lie-of-tax state east of the Mississippi. So I always try to remind all my cowboy friends that sit on that committee that there are other counties that get, uh, pill payments besides the western states. And then, to drive home the fact that when MAC goes to the events and work with NACO, we act in a bipartisan, uh, way. And we do everything we can to reach out to all of our representatives and senators. Uh, if you want to meet any of your representatives, there could be office hours that have already been set up through MAC. You can contact the staff or talk to them when you get there. Uh, there is one that's always set and stoned. Uh, Senator Stabenow and Senator Peters always agree to meet with us. It's normally in the agricultural, uh, committee room. Uh, both of them come at the same time to field questions from us and, you know, to give us an update of what's going on. So I strongly encourage you to attend that if you can. They are asking this year of RSVP. You can do that through MAC, and I'm assuming for some reason that might have something to do with security. And I know that on Tuesday, they've added a special event that normally triggers that there's someone higher up in the administration that'll probably be coming in. So if you got a chance to hang around Tuesday, I strongly encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I would like to echo Commissioner Diaz's comments and express my gratitude to our Health Department for providing STI testing in the past and providing the vouchers, um, to GVSU. And, and the reason is this. Our Health Department's responsibility is to help prevent communicable diseases, and that includes sexually transmitted infections. Um, when you're in public health, I feel your, uh, your job is to reduce harm, not necessarily to editorialize on the way things are being promoted. And if there is a conversation about sex and you have means to help prevent the transmission of sexually, uh, sexual-based diseases, I would hope that our Health Department would provide that assistance to ensure public, greater public health. And I would also express, frankly, even if, uh, the method in which some of these, uh, are being talked about wouldn't necessarily make a, a great evening activity for me, I would, I express my gratitude to, uh, to GVSU for providing a, a setting that is comfortable for students who may not have had other means to learn about sex and healthy sexual, uh, activity in their homes or in their, uh, high schools. Uh, and the fact of the matter is, humor can be helpful when talking about sex, because I'm a 31-year-old man with a kid, married, and I feel uncomfortable talking about sex this morning.
Well, you're doing a lot of it.
I know! But I'm doing it because I think it is important to remember that statistics time and again have shown that abstinence only or the absence of sex ed versus those who have had comprehensive sex ed that talk about the importance of delay and how contraceptions can be used are just as likely to have sex before marriage, and one is much more likely to prevent the transmission of STIs in unplanned pregnancy. And given the fact that we have people who have not had that education, who may be needing that education, that we have a, a healthy environment for people to experience that, I am very, very thankful that our Health Department has continued to not editorialize, but to provide access to the resources they have in a way to prevent communicable diseases. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say, uh, congratulations to us again to celebrate Black History Month. It's always really exciting to share your roots with other people. Black history is everyone's, uh, history. So I'd like to quote Dr. Martin Luther King. He's one of my favorite people in the world. I wish I had met him. Uh, he says, "I look forward to the day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." It takes seven to 11 seconds to judge someone when you first meet them. And many times, you know, we judge based on our biases. So I'd like to, um, thank us as a body for celebrating Black History Month. Uh, thank you for all the people who do speak up for people who are African-Americans. That makes us, you know, appreciate you even more as allies, because sometimes we just don't want to be the angry black woman in the room, you know? So we just thank you for speaking out, uh, for us. Um, the city of Kentwood is celebrating MLK Day, uh, with a walk. We're celebrating Black History Month. Uh, it's going to be a peace walk with New Hope Baptist Church and the African-American Museum. Yes, there is one downtown African-American museum Come, we lock arms together, all races, all creed, all nationalities, and we celebrate people, so definitely would like to have you there. I'm excited for the new members that are going to NACO. I am part of the membership committee, so we have a breakfast on Saturday where we welcome all of the new commissioners who haven't been to NACO before, so you'll see me there with my smile on, and I'm just going to be so excited to share you guys, and I'm so proud of all of you, so I'm going to be able to share you with all of NACO. I'm also part of the Healthy Resilient Counties and the Community Economic Workforce and Development Steering Committee, so we will be busy there at NACO, making sure that we bring the information back to our counties. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boujack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to comment on the Grand Valley State University Sex Education Week that was brought to our attention, and I'd like to go on record that I'm opposed to the use of the Kent County Health Department logo as a sponsor of this event, and I applaud your efforts yesterday to reach out to the Grand Valley State University. Since such time, those logos have been removed, and you indicated that you were going to have some kind of investigation to find out exactly how those logos were being used and promoted in their campaign, and I'd like to hear a report back to the full board as to how that happened and what we can do to prevent those kinds of improper uses of the county logo with events that are not sponsored by the Kent County Health Department.
Thank you. I think our commitment was to get the facts, we'll find out the facts and get back to folks, so. Yes, Commissioner Oliver Green?
Thank you, Chair. I just would like to encourage all of us to participate in upcoming sessions hosted by the Black Voices at the River, even though it says Black Voices at the River, it is important for us to participate and hear what constituents are saying, what they would like, how to be involved, and so Commissioner Baker and I, I'm glad we were there, along with county staff and city staff, and it is well worth your time, so I'm encouraging you to participate. Also, yesterday, I had the opportunity of meeting with Mr. Christopher Becker, our prosecuting attorney, and he said he has reached out to several of the new commissioners who have not responded. It was a good meeting, so I'm also voicing, if you make time in your schedule to meet with Mr. Baker, I think you will like the tour as well as this conversation. We are, of course, in our household, go blue, he's go green, I know there are some of you that don't like that, but again, I'm just expressing, if you have the time, meet with him, it's well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you for underscoring what we really mean by bipartisan.[1644.01][1644.01](laughter) Okay, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to follow up with Minority Vice Chair Wooden's comments and suggest that if there are students that have made it to become students at Grand Valley State University that are not educated about sex, I'm happy to help educate them.
Who wants to go after that?[1680.11][1680.11](laughter) I don't see anyone. Oh, shoot, I have to, thanks a lot, Commissioner. So a couple of things. One, just an update, Commissioners Hildebrand, Green, McLeod, and Wooden and I met for the Standing Rules Meeting this week, we will be following up in another week, I think, or approximately another week, two weeks. Continue our deliberation about the restructuring of the Board and the standing committees, a number of you were also attending that as well, so appreciate that. Just so you know, that conversation is going on, if you do have an interest in participating or sending us your thoughts about that, do so, reminding that we have to have our report back to this board by the first meeting in April, so this work will happen between now and mid-part of March. Second thing is, I have established a Bonding Review Advisory Committee with a statement of purpose, and I've asked Commissioners Coleman and Green and Baker to serve on that going forward and to take a look at this question of what would be an appropriate review structure on bonding requests, and to come back with its recommendations by May 8th. So thank you to you folks willing to serve on that committee and help us with that. So with that, Commissioner Burrell, you have something.
Yes, thank you, Chair Steck. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, February 23, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
All the support and favors, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you.